Bring the corners in a little.
Yeah, so we can see each other. You know, if we're trying to work together.
Right. Let's try. So we can see each other better. You can just sit and bring the.
Well, they'll use what they do.
Yeah.
We happy with that?
Yeah.
So we can see each other better. Good idea. Just to give you people a heads up, there was a little misunderstanding of communication, but we are going to allow people to speak during the meeting. But strictly concerning decommissioning and financial security or financial. Yes, financial security. We'll allow, well, I don't have a timeskeeper. Yeah, we'll give you up to, what do we think?
I don't know, do you really have a lot to say when you speak on decommissioning?
I just want to give them an opportunity to say what what they want to contribute to, then we'll go with our.
Twenty minutes.
I mean.
Twenty minutes each.
We'll start out, we'll start out with three to five and see how it works. That'll be a little later in the meeting, or towards the beginning, but. I think it's important that we hear what you folks have to say before we make some of our decisions tonight. That's who we're supposed to represent is the people of Tamae County. Got awful quiet in here.
They're waiting for their twenty minutes, or forty, whatever.
Well, I just want to make sure I'm on the decommissioning party. We, we cut the base of that, I want to be on that right now.
This is that thing that's recording this all for everybody?
Hey.
You have to sit next to the boss, so.
It's good to see you, Mark.
He's gonna move up here, but okay, that's fine, you can sit here.
I'll get that chair. Can I grab one of these?
Yes, he was gonna come up here.
You're slow.
No, Jack.
No, Jack is.
Don't give him any money under the counter.
Steve, you have, what I, what you gave me, do you have copies of?
Yeah, I need copies of. I gave you all the copies I have.
Want to save one for yourself?
They did, but it's in all. I still, I still.
Save that place for me. Got it. You did? Oh, you did? Three different stores?
Well, a lot of my, there's a lot of kids without good hands.
And then they always say, neatness counts.
I do like to be able to read a few things. So these are just all the decommissioning from this.
Just decommissioning sessions. Yeah, I, I'm white and, and Tamae.
Yes, well.
I kind of make some edits on us.
Over my head and Richard.
Where'd your mom tell you?
Was it that?
So we make these, we do little craft things for Christmas. With my family, all our, my nieces and nephews and their kids. I am, I think I am. Was it you that gave it to me?
No.
Anyway.
What is this one that you, you gave us?
These are melted plastic ornaments.
This part revises. Stick it in.
Well, anyway, you take a plastic out and you decorate it with permanent markers.
Oh, wait a minute, that pass was all.
And it goes, yeah.
No, you did, you had the, you had the highlighter.
It melts into a little round ball, like the plastic.
We got it. Wait, we need it, we got it, we're here to need it.
Yeah.
That's what we're gonna do.
Yeah. I was very, forgot himself.
What do you have on the other way?
That 105, we didn't get that on our, that's page. That 105, I wanted to highlight that. But I've got it for everybody. I, I put it in your packets. I don't remember. And then Al Shaebo.
This, no, he's, this is.
Is Al here tonight?
He just wanted you to know that that was.
I don't see Al either, so. I can read his. Yeah, read his and then, yes, so those are the only two that I got just before I. That would have came in February, I don't know if they read it in February. That's your card. Yeah, oh, yeah. But it's in, yeah, it's in your. Swanger breezed them off when it started up. Yeah, if it was read before, I tell people that, you know, if they're not here, they send that in and it's ruled out for here. Trying to get through it. But, but if you read it before the meeting, then that's up to you.
Yep, he's on here. He's on my list.
He was here before?
This, we had, this, we had stuff from him before, yeah.
Yeah, was, was the letter read or?
Uh, look.
Yeah, so Al Shaebo's. And this one.
This, this one?
Yeah.
We got it.
Yeah, they send it in February, but I haven't.
I kept them all, I kept them all. Had a little spreadsheet. I had a lot.
So, yeah, I guess that's yours. Yeah, we read that out. But, but Al's is doing that. Yeah, we'll read out. Unless she shows up and I'll read it. And then he can read. Thank you.
Yeah, I have all these on this side, we're from companies, this side, we're from citizens. We did. I had a lot of everything.
I've got 601. Boy, didn't they yell that loud? Before we start the meeting, I'm going to reiterate what I said before some of you folks got here. We are going to have an opportunity for anybody that wants to speak for three to five minutes. And I'll adjust that as we go, depending on if everybody speaks, we might as well cut it down to three, but. On the subject of decommissioning and financial security for solar farms, that's something to stay on for everyone here tonight. Because if you get off that subject, I'm going to just ask you to sit down. All right, so please, please abide by that so we can get through this meeting.
Justin, do you like me to set the timer then for five minutes first and then?
Oh, yeah, once we get started, right? I was going to look at the clock, but that'd make it easier for me to listen.
Yeah, they got the timer here and they can look back.
Why don't you set it for four, we'll compromise, there you go.
See, if I have something to say, Doug, if I can't stand up, then you can't tell me to sit down.
Can I tell you to lay down?
How about fall down?
Well, I'll call the meeting to order and let's stand and say our pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In your blue, in your blue folder, folks on the board here should see the minutes or the agenda.
Doug, I'm sorry, I also forgot to tell you that those April 17 minutes, they just didn't get to me, so the April 17th and the ones from the last meeting, I both.
I saw them, yes, thank you. So, uh, we might make a few, I'm going to recommend a few changes to the. Let me see here, approve agenda, approve previous minutes, somebody might have mentioned, okay, that'll work. Does somebody want to move to approve the agenda on the board here, please?
A second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor, if there's any discussion. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Pose nay, motion carried. Now, if you look at the previous minutes, we'll approve them after you have just looked them over, there'd be the September 11th ones. Just a short page there. That would have been our most recent meeting. And as Bob said, he put the April 17th ones in there too, if you want to look at them sometime, but I don't think we need to look at them tonight because they're pretty long.
I don't recall if those got emailed to you right away or not.
I don't either. I'm lucky to remember what, what going on in that last minute, sometime my wife's got to remind me, don't we here? So, we do these minutes quickly to ourselves and. Do we have a motion to approve the previous minutes? Craig Mu, do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Looks good, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, motion carried. Opening remarks by Mr. Administrator.
Okay, I'd like to thank you all for coming, uh, we appreciate everyone's public comment, uh, to this board at any time. They have a lot of work to do, a lot of them, well, all of them, just a lot of them have been working on getting information from different counties and so on. They have to decide what's going to be bad, what they're going to put in there to present to the board of supervisors. And this will be the first part of the year with all five of them. And the board of supervisors then will look things over, make any changes that they want to do, or whatever they decide to do with any moratoriums or anything like that, they make that decision. And then, uh, for example, if they approve the ordinance, make the changes, and it goes from attorney, that gets final approval, and then it comes back for the three readings. So there's, there's a lot of things to do. For example, if there was a moratorium, then they would have, for an example, a year, you know, whatever that moratorium lasts, they have until the end of that to have the ordinance done. That being either by, you know, presented by them, or the board of supervisors can also choose just to take it back on their own. So that's all up to them. It was in December of last year that it was handed over to the board of, I'm just, I'm sorry, we got too many meetings this week. To the, uh, zoning administration. I'm sorry. There's a lot of emails back and forth and stuff, uh, Wade takes the top honors for the way he's gathering a lot of copies and information, but they're all working very hard, and it's a volunteer, it's a volunteer thing. Pay that they get is just a minor, it's just a bonus. Appreciate if everybody works together, they always entertain thoughts and comments from the public. That's how it should be, everybody should have a voice. And if they, whatever they decide, with wind and solar issues the way they are, they decide there's something that's made where they don't have it, and it's not allowed in the county, then that's how it is. And they decide that they have an ordinance where there's things that are permitted and things that are, it's whatever they come up with. It takes a lot of work, it gets frustrating sometimes, and sometimes it's kind of a killer messenger thing, and I've got to relay something that came from an attorney and, uh, you know, I'm just relaying the message and not getting. That gets to me and then I have to pass it on. I personally, it makes no difference to me how an ordinance goes, my job is just to follow the ordinance and follow the rules and laws that apply to it. I have no personal interest in, in any of the projects, be it wind or solar. These people are doing a fine job and I appreciate it, and there's a lot of work to do yet, so everybody, please be patient and stick with them, and they'll do the best they can, and you get to the board supervisor as soon as they get things together. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to give the board members an opportunity, I know it's kind of springing on you, but just to summarize in a few minutes, what you've learned since our last meeting, looking into this decommissioning, I don't, we don't need to get into, delving into it too deep, but this time, I'd like to hear the public comment before we make our decision tonight, if we can get that far. But if each one of you would want to share a few thoughts on what you've learned since our last meeting, or what your concerns are. Which, uh, Steve, you want to start?
That's fine, one thing, you, you may make, make me sit down right away, but I, I saw this in the Des Moines Register, I thought it was important for us to understand what's coming here. And Mid-America did a 20-year power generation needs study. And this, yeah, this was in the registry yesterday. And they want to build 3,500, 3,050 megawatts of solar energy in their area. And it's a lot of solar coming. They mentioned nothing about wind, they talk about natural gas, and they talk about a modular nuclear energy facility. But, uh, we're going to get a lot of solar built out here, it's coming, and I think that's why we need to be very careful with how we put these zoning requirements together. I guess a couple other things that I've learned too, I, I just, you know, was out in a, I've been to about four locations now, looking at the facilities. I thought there'd be a lot more concrete in the ground, I thought they would really level the ground and do a lot of things, a lot of landscape, a lot of, uh, dirt work, I guess, before they started building. And what I saw was most of those were pounding big steel posts in the ground and, uh, putting it up, I think it'd be, it would be much easier, we, I know we talked about a lot on decommissioning costs last time, and we're really concerned with some of the estimates we saw. I can see why it's a little cheaper than what I initially thought. So that's one of the things I've learned about it, I guess.
Thank you. Craig, you want to go next?
I just can't really tell you what all I've learned, I've just been reading the, basically everything Wade sends us and digging through the decommissioning plans, yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot to go through, a lot to absorb, it's, uh, we'll get through it, but no, I really can't.
That's all right.
That's about all I got for you.
Kind of surprised everybody with that.
Yeah.
Carol, you want to go next?
Sure. Well, everybody would be happy to know I found an expert finally that would talk to me, so, and it's a woman. She was a, she works for kind of a wind-solar watchdog agency out in, uh, on the east coast, but I think the biggest thing that, um, she imparted to me was that, um, some of the things that have happened across the United States when it comes to wind and solar that, um, never made it into ordinances, so, um, counties were liable, um, citizens were rely, were liable for, for things that had happened and for decommissioning, so she was just, she said, make sure whatever you do, that cost are there upfront and, um, you know, for the decommissioning plan, and I said, okay. And I passed it on to you.
Well, I think, uh, the, the decommissioning plan is probably, I, the reason I said, I think that's where we need to start, because we don't have a good one, and don't build it. And I think one thing that really emphasized that when it came out with these windmill blades, at the meeting last night, somebody talking that there's still a pile of windmill blades somewhere. And people are trying to sue people and get things done to get them moved, and, and, uh, Mid-America doesn't want anything to do with that batch, and so if, if we don't have a good decommissioning and some responsibility, 40 years down the road, our kids will end up with that, and it's real easy to say, I don't have to worry about it, because I'm, it's possible I won't be here 40 years from now. But I, I think that, that needs to be done, and when things are happening sooner and we're seeing the messes that some of them are getting into, does show how important this is to have this done and have it done correctly, and it, and it isn't that, isn't that complicated, just getting, putting responsibility in the right place and making sure that the ability is there to do that decommissioning. And, and when I, as I've gone, as I've gone through all these ordinances, there are so many of them, some are pretty good, and they just all have a little hole here and a little hole there, and that's all it takes, you know, and the mouse will get in. So, uh, we got to make sure all the holes are plugged. And we've kind of had some ideas to do that, that I can go through when we get to the discussion.
Well, I'm not going to weasel out on you. I am overwhelmed by it all. I think we've got six, eight, 10 different decommissioning plans to look at here that we've, I've kind of gone through and picked out what I like out of some and add it to some of the others. We've got the original Tamae County one. Uh, my concern is that, you know, every year with urban sprawl, we've got more and more acres of land taken out of production. And our farm ground is precious to us here in Iowa for crop, crop production. And every year, I don't know what the figure is, but it's thousands of acres that are eaten up by urban sprawl, industrialization or whatnot. And that is a concern in the back of my mind, because I feel like God put this land here for us to produce food or energy, but we've got to decide what the best way to go is there. Now, if some of the public has some comments on decommissioning and financial security required for decommissioning, if you want to just raise your hand, and you don't have to stand up if you don't want to. And we'll, Bob can set the timer for four minutes, and we as a board, I think, would like to hear your comments as they relate to decommissioning and financial security requirements for solar farms. So I'll open that up to, uh, the people here tonight. Jim?
This last spring down in Greensville, Iowa, tornado came through, I think everybody's aware of that. I've got a friend down there, and he's got three sol, uh, Wade brought up wind turbines, but I just want to make sure this doesn't, I mean, it's just basic, it's related to panels too. Okay, so, uh, I talked to my friend and he said, yeah, the tornado took down 10 wind turbines. And tornadoes go through solar panel fields too, I would say. But the last I talked to him, and maybe some of you guys that are employed in this business know, but he said, no one has touched the decommissioning or rebuilding of those wind turbines since the tornado this last spring. And so I would assume they're still in the fields, you know, they're, they're bent in half. But, and also, if they're not running, you know, the landowner is not profiting from it. And, uh, I just, uh, if we have the solar panels, it's, this part of decommissioning, you know, they need to be torn out of there if things go awry, or repaired, you know, in a timely manner. Okay?
I assure your concern, you know, Steve made the comment they're not concreted in, well, that's good and that's bad. I mean, all of us that live in Tamae County that were anywhere near the duration back in eight, 10, or 20, you know, the buildings were scattered all over the neighborhood, uh, dead critters were found along the highway where cattle had gotten out. And I was, we were picking up pieces of steel right in the fall at the com, you know, while we, while we were combining to get it out of our way. Well, I can imagine what would happen to a solar farm if that 100 mile an hour plus winds comes along, and you had twisters in it as well, and that's a concern. Because we do have a lot of disasters here between tornadoes and durations. Who else would like to comment on decommissioning and financial security? Please.
Yeah, I will.
Mister.
I'm David Turner, and I, I will be on the board, Lord willing, creaks not rise, uh, January, so what I'm concerned about with anything that happens in the county is I don't want the county or the citizen that the stuff's, the property it's on, having to pay for anything if, when it's being decommissioned. I'm also very concerned financially, and I, and I'll be upfront, I've talked with Lance and, and Justin, they've been completely upfront with me, and Ben, I've even talked with him a little bit too. Much more forthcoming than the other fellows. So I'm not concerned about these guys, I just want to make sure that what the ordinance says protects Tamae County, protects the citizens of Tamae County, and in the decommissioning phases, everything needs to be cleaned up. And the finances need to be looked at for the future, you know, if it's going to be here for 40 years, I want to make sure that the bonds and all those things will cover the money in 40 years. I mean, look at the, look what's happened with the, the inflation recently, it's, we're 20%, and yes, the current rate's low, but the prices are still, we're still paying that 20% rates. So those are the concerns that I'm going to be looking for when you guys send the stuff up to the board, is are we, are we protected financially, the county wise? I don't want to be, I don't want our tax dollars to be cleaning up something. It needs to be taken care of by the, the, the people putting the stuff in, so that's what I'm looking for.
You touched on inflation, we've talked about that, that's very important. Because look what it's done in the last few years. It's crazy. Ben, right?
Yes, yes, that's right. Thank you, and I, I gotta be on the side, so I'm, my back's there, buddy. So, yeah, Ben Metcalf, um, I am, um, a developer with Ted Renewables, so we have a history in this country of legacy infrastructure, namely oil and gas wells, where there wasn't decommissioning bonds put in, and the legacy of that is there's hundreds of thousands of uncapped, un, poorly, or not decommissioned oil and gas wells, and I learned about this on a project that Ted developed, where there was 100 of these wells that were drilled back in the 1890s and early 1900s, and fame, fabulous history is interesting, but the legacy was, a lot of these. fame, fabulous history is interesting, but the legacy was, a lot of these wells are still moving in. Because of that project, telling me a couple of things, one, you really need to have a good, doesn't matter your energy infrastructure, you have to have a good decommissioning bond, because someone's going to pay that tab. That's a fact, and so I, I agree with you, and I commend you guys for being so diligent with this. Now, because of our project, we work with the, the oil and gas industry and the regulators in Ohio, those wells are starting to be capped. And that's something I'm really proud of. Decommissioning is important, as a society, we've learned, and I can't speak to the examples that you spoke on the wind industry, but I think it is absolutely critical that any energy infrastructure that's being developed, do it safely, part of that is having a good decommissioning bond. So, we are for strong decommissioning bond, I think, decommissioning, though, you can't just look at it at the end date in forty years, part of it starts today with being good steward of the soil, that's actually because ultimately, one of the things that we've said is, at the end of our operating period, if the landowner chooses, it will be ready to be returned to arable or to agricultural production. And if you haven't managed your soil as well, it doesn't matter if you pull a step out of the ground, things aren't going to grow, and so that's why we brought a couple of our, our colleagues from Stand Tech who work in Vegetative Management, Soil South, who are the experts, because that is something that we take very seriously. Thinking about decommissioning starts with your, how well you construct the project, to make sure that it's safe from durations, there is wind testing that is happening, that would make it safe for durations. Now, a category five Hertz tornado, it's probably nothing that can be safe for that, so I, I won't try and sugarcoat that. That's scary no matter what type of infrastructure or building you have. But when it comes to decommissioning, like, there are examples of good decommissioning and bad decommissioning. A good decommissioning plan, make sure that the county is not left holding the bag for anything. It has, make sure there's a good third-party engineer that's, it's not adjusting for inflation, it's adjusting a third-party engineering estimate every five years to make sure that their estimate is right. Because technologies change, costs change, and so it's not just taking the original price and escalating it, it's making sure every five years, you're having an independent engineer give you a professional opinion on what it's going to cost, and then adjusting your bond appropriately, which in itself will also serve to adjust for inflation. A bad decommissioning bond, one, leaves loopholes. And I think we've all seen loopholes in government regulation, know what results in that. The other way you have bad regulation is, is if it's so onerous, it's an effective financial penalty that doesn't allow parties to go forward, so we've seen examples of decommissioning bond that really is, it's a thinly veiled moratorium. And so, I would just ask, as you go through it, like, if there's ways that we can, you know, provide suggestions, recommendations, point you to experts who are better suited than I am, who are engineers, we'd love help. Other, otherwise, I just want to say, thank you, I think this is probably something I'm passionate about, because I've seen the results of other energy infrastructure not doing this right, and people suffer, so let's get this right, thank you, and if there's ways we can contribute to that, let us know.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
You're talking about
Your question.
decommissioning bonds and financial instruments.
Yep.
So, you guys put a bunch of these together, and I'm not saying that that's what's going to happen, but usually that's what happens, is a bunch of these go together, and then you sell it to somebody else, or they sell it to somebody else. How, how do we make sure that that bond will stay right with that facility, right with that, and always be funded?
Yeah, no, it's a really good question, so, the project, and it's, this is very common across different types of power infrastructure, whether it's coal, oil and gas, nuclear, that these projects do change ownership, but the project in itself is a standalone LLC, and its finances are LLC, and so the commissioning, the bond that is placed, is placed between the LLC and the bank, and then it's the county who can call on it, so, the LLC, the project company LLC, in this case, Draft4Solar, we wouldn't be able to call that bond back. That bond is put in place, and with the appropriate, you know, credit rating with the bank, and so then the county can call on that bond if the project is not in compliance with its operating permit. It's as simple as that, and so, but it is, you know, and I'm, I'm not a finance guy, so I don't know the intricacies of how bonds get placed. So, I might be lied on some of those details, but it's not something that, like, once it's placed, if it's put together correctly, that, that bond is with the bank, and it's to the county's name for the county to call on when it comes time to decommission, if the company doesn't follow the, the conditions of its operating permit, or is in default of those conditions. So whether that be the state permit or the county permit.
So, one of my concerns would be, say, you have tours has it for three years.
Yep.
Sell it to somebody else. Within a short period of time, a month or two, three, duration comes along and just destroys it, spreads it all over everybody's fields.
Yep.
You're out of it, because you already sold it, what about that new company? What if they just say, well, hey, we just bought this, we're not going to stand behind this, this, you know, this son of a gun, we're going to get out of here.
Yeah.
What, what's, what's to stop them from doing that?
Well, they could, but the bond is going to be called by you guys, the bank will pay the bond, and the bank will go after the backers. So, that's a liability on the bank, that's not, so, when the bond is placed, it's no longer whether our LLC is in place or not, that bond is placed with the bank, with the right credit agency, and then now you can call on that bond. Does that make sense?
If it works that way.
But this would be more insurance, wouldn't it, this would be more of the insurance that would cover if, if you had a duration, if you had a damaged event like that, would the insurance on the facility?
Correct, so, the first thing that would happen, the insurance would kick in, and we'd fix it, and it'd keep operating, but in case, let's say, our insurance company doesn't show up, the future owners of the LLC doesn't show up, that bond is still in place, then for the county to call on and to fund the decommissioning of it.
But who's, who, how are they going to force that company to clean it up?
It's, the, the bond is essentially sitting in a bank account with the bank, and so, the company might not, but now, the bond requirement, let's just say it's five million dollars, the county can call on that five million dollars, now it has those mon, that, that five million dollars available to clean it up.
So, that five million has first come out of your pocket, so to speak.
Well, the company would post the bond
Right.
through the bank, that-
Bonding companies would-
Right, so then it would come, right, it would be like, we would have already posted it, and so, yeah, so wouldn't it be like, the company writing a check to the county for the five million dollars, no, the company has, you know, the, and the bank is only going to give the company a bond with the right credit rating,
Right.
right, because that's their, because they're now assuming that risk, and they're getting paid to assume that risk. And so, if we default, they take on that risk, they pay out the bond to the county.
What if this new company doesn't get the credit rating, and then they don't get a bond? The bond, bank says, I'm not going to give you a bond anymore.
Right, well then, so there's lifetimes this bond, I'm probably a little bit over my skis on the technical legalities of how bonds are placed.
I'm happy to jump in.
Yeah, if you want to jump in, please.
Could you introduce yourself?
Absolutely, my name is Mike Marquess, I'm a lawyer, I promise I'm not an evil lawyer. Some of you know, I know, some I don't, I, I have a general practice here in town, across from the courthouse, and I don't know very much about solar projects in general, but the Ted gentleman reached out to me and asked me to help kind of navigate some of the boards and things with the county. And so I've learned a lot about solar during this short time period, that's why I've been attending the meetings. But I can speak to how bonding works, because I, I've worked with that every day in general law practice, and so, with a bond, it's like insurance policy, but it is separate, so there would be insurance on the project that would kick in if there's damage by a natural disaster, you know, the typical things that insurance covers. But the bond is a legally enforceable promise from a financial institution, that if something in particular happens, they will cover the cost of that bond, so, in this case, let's say, this company posted the bond and then sold the project. That bond is not released by that sale. Once the bond is paid for and made, which you would make a precondition to any sort of licensing, once that bond's in place, it doesn't get released because the company goes out of business, because the company sells the project to another company, anything like that. The bond has to stay in place for its duration.
How, what is, so that's, that bond will be good for forty years, then?
Well, it sounds like what they're proposing is to do it in five-year increments where it's readjusted.
Well, that's only after five years, if this new company just said, I'm not going to put any more money in.
Then you call in the bond, or the county does, and says, if, if you're not going to buy a new bond, or you don't qualify for a new bond, then we're ripping out the, the project, and the five million dollars is paid to the county to do that. The downside for the county is that then you've got a, the county has to hire-
No, but if you, if you're a week late and the bond has expired?
It, it doesn't, the bond doesn't, essentially, once the bond is purchased, it's in place, so if the new company doesn't purchase a new bond, the existing one doesn't just go away. And basically, they, and what you would do is part of your process, you would say, okay, at four years and six months, you have to show us that you're obtaining the renewal of the bond. And then, if they don't, then you call the bond, and, and and the bond would be written, so it's not just, you know, basically covering costs, you would want a sufficient enough bond that it's going to cover all of your costs, and it's, it's not going to leave the county expending anything or the landowner. So like, a lot of times we'll write, you'll see bonds at, you know, a hundred and ten percent of a particular value, and not just a hundred percent to cover those additional costs, so. That's, that's kind of basically how it would work in this circumstance.
Mike, you started to say the county might have, in, in that situation, unfortunately, the county would have to, what?
Yeah, so let's say the company went out of business or disappeared.
Right.
To get the project physically removed out of the soil, you know, the county would have the money, and then either the county or the landowner at that point would have to hire somebody to yank it out, and so you'd want your bond to cover the additional cost of that, you know, having to do that work to find somebody and cover-
Just like the project management aspect of it, right?
Yeah.
Legal fees.
Yep. Yeah.
And I, I think what Mike said is important, a hundred and ten percent, that is, that additional above and beyond that can be considered reasonable, the government's rate of fees and the project management, we've seen some where it's like three hundred percent, well, that's clearly written in a way to be financially punitive and discouraged development. And so there's a way to do it so it keeps the county very safe, while also not being punitive for the sake of being punitive.
I'm going to dare to disagree with you, I don't think a hundred and ten percent is enough.
I'm not, I'm not saying-
Isn't that what you said, or?
No, I'm-
You didn't mean it that way.
What I meant is, an example is, there's an amount that can be set that you guys are working through, and will get the right advice from your county lawyer and through engineers of what that appropriate level is. There's above and beyond that, though, I would say, could, and what those thresholds are, that's for the board to determine with their, you know, deliberations and input and advice from councilmen, advice from engineering firms. I'm certainly not someone who would put together a cost estimate of what it would take to manage that process, so, I apologize if I imply that.
I misunderstood.
And I'm just throwing that number out, I have no-
Right, yeah.
But you would build the decommissioning plan as part of your application?
We would submit a decommissioning plan to be approved as a part of it, and then it would be up to, depending on how the ordinance is written, right, you could then choose to approve that decommissioning plan, or not approve if it doesn't meet the requirements that you're looking for, and you can be very prescriptive, or less prescriptive, depending on how you see that set, and then go from there. Thank you, Mike, for helping me with that, my shortcomings.
Is it okay if I just say one?
Sure.
Okay. I, even though I've been in the, my, my law office was destroyed by the tornado in twenty eighteen, I was over in Marshalltown, and I previously worked here with the county attorney's office, so, I, I've been here about five years in my office. And I say that because I've not really been involved, or to you, if you will, to like the wind issue, so I've kind of buried my head in the sand on that. I just want to make sure that it's clear, because these guys have told me from day one that their job is to work with the county on this stuff, and I don't intend to, you know, be intimidating in any way or anything, I'm not here as a litigator or making sure everything is set perfectly. I'm here to help any way I can, and these guys, there's nothing hostile, so I would echo what, what they have said about, you know, trying to work with the county. I know the weird thing is different, but we're not in any way, my instructions are not in any way to be channeled.
Yep, appreciate that.
Yeah, just- Thanks.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions?
Laura.
Okay. Most of these comments, I have already sent to you guys, but I know you guys are getting a lot of comments, so I'll just kind of touch on a few things. First of all, in section five of the original graphic, I don't know if you've changed it much, section five for the decommissioning plan, currently page fourteen, there's some wording you might want to revise, the second sentence says, "Solar access regulatory board or it's designated for the board shall review the plan for completeness and then refer it to the board." So my issue is that basically you're referring it to yourselves and/or the supervisors, I'm not sure, because I believe the regulatory board was the board of supervisors. So I don't know if you meant for a separate board to be referenced, or if there just needs to be more clarity in the wording. Excuse me. That was just a little confusing for me, I'm sure it'd be confusing for others. I suggested adding a section on covering ownership transfers, which would fall under the financial financial section and the decommissioning. Sorry, my print's really tiny. So, other stipulations could be added as well, besides just, you know, hey, we're approving this, or here's the actual process, but that could also include making sure that the bond is transferred, making sure that their decommissioning falls within the county's decommissioning, or if they submit the plans that, if they need to submit their own plans for decommissioning, if they're different or the same, I don't know how you guys want to do that, but it should probably, probably be spelled out, because these projects do get transferred. And while I understand that these guys are above board, they're not going to be the only developers that are going to be coming around, so we've got to get this to cover basis, even though they're working in good faith, others may not, and we've run into that with the wind side. So, just, just to be clear on all points, so that we're not letting any loopholes in. I do also think we should have non-refundable permit application fees of certain amounts, I put in a specific amount, you guys can discuss that, and, you know, get suggestions from people that are more aware of what's, what's normal, or what should cover the workload and the labor to do so. Because that would be additional labor processing for county offices. I do think you should add an expiration to any conditional use permits, and that if that, if that cup expires, they would need to start over, including applications. We also run into that with, I know certain above-board companies, both on wind and solar, would build right away with the cups, and so it's kind of a moot point. But if you do run into someone in the future that's not, you know, altogether on the right level, we want to be able to have the adjustment board review the cups if they get past a certain point. So they're not trying to build four, six, eight years later on something that has outdated information. So that if that expires, whatever, whatever timeline you put on that, they would have to start over with new research, new submission on materials, and then new application fees, obviously. And that would also include building permit application fees, that would cover you financially for the extra work that the county would have to do. And then also for the financial side, include consequences for non-compliance on ordinance or permits relating to the project. Include fines for per day per violation, and possibility of revoking permits if that's not followed, I'm not saying it'll be these guys, I'm saying there may be many, you, you mentioned many other solar projects that could be coming through, we want to, we want to protect the county in case there are issues. So having that non-compliance consequence would be good for the county, so that they could have those people enforcing it and moving forward, I think that covers-
Is that your timer, Bob?
That was a timeout.
Yeah.
I, I think that covers all my points.
All right, thank you.
And they, they were previously submitted, I just wanted to bring them back to forefront, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw a couple of hands in the bag. That's Mike. You'll be next.
I'll come around this way. So I can address the board. I'm Mike Carberry, I'm with Bright Future Iowa.
I'm Mike Carberry. I'm with Bright Future Iowa. We're a statewide organization that promotes a good policy, creating good projects in both wind, solar and storage. I grew up in New Hall, Iowa, not too far east here on thirty. I wanna thank you for all your work. I know it's volunteer and I know you put in a lot of time. I'm a former Johnson County supervisor and I'm now celebrating twenty years in renewable energy policy and also ag policy. Steve was talking about these projects he went out and visited and decommissioning. Twenty years ago, projects were a lot different. We moved a lot of dirt because we didn't have the technology to kind of put solar on an undulating landscape. And a lot of people think that Iowa's flat, but if you've ever ridden a bike across Iowa, you could, you know that it's not. And we also used to put underneath of it, people put gravel or they put turf grass. We don't do that anymore. And Ben was talking about what we do, what happens to the soil. They actually almost recreate a prairie now underneath of that and that helps build soil health. So when you decommission, the soil is actually a lot better than the soil that was there when you built the solar farm. Because it's drawing down carbon, it's building soil organic matter and those sorts of things. And they all, all they're doing is taking a pile driver and driving that steel down maybe ten foot. And when they're done, they pull it out. And our supervisor in waiting here was talking about, and I guess his name is David. That is absolutely true about not leaving the taxpayers of the county liable for anything. And that's through the whole ordinance. You never want the taxpayers of Tama County to be liable for anything. And that's the road use agreements have to be in there. Anything that you want them to do or anybody to do, you put it in the ordinance. And to save you time and money, I always recommend R and D. And you've already done some of it by looking at other ordinances. And I recommend looking at ordinances where there is successful projects. Now, in my case, I don't say R and D is research and development. I say it's rip off and duplicate. Cut and paste this good stuff, put it into a document and then put the Tama County spin on it, right? And then you come up with the, with a really good document. You take the best of everybody's and you make it the absolute best ordinance in the state by doing exactly what you want and you learn from the other ones, right? You find out what worked with one county and what didn't work and you move on from there. Now, decommissioning, the surety bond is what our lawyer Mike was talking about. We're seeing other counties, and I've worked in twenty counties, I think, in the last three years. They are either redoing them every three to five years and the surety bond is at least about a hundred and thirty percent. Because of inflation, you wanna be covered in between those years. What if inflation is ten percent a year and you're not redoing it for three years? Well, or you're not doing it for five years. You wanna be covered in those in-between years, right? So take a look at that and, and make sure you're covered those in-between years because you might not get to it for the fourth year. So make sure you're covered in between that. Hundred and thirty percent is not unreasonable. Five years is not unreasonable. Cover your county taxpayers, make sure your roads are taken care of. Though, I have not worked with any bad developers. They just don't wanna do one project, these developers in the area. They're, they wanna be good developers. They're proud to wear Ted stuff on their breast and on their hat. They would like to do multiple projects. So they're, listen to them. They'll take care of you. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Any information on soil health after decommissioning of the solar project? Do you have any information on soil, soil health after decommissioning? Obviously, they're not getting water and so I'm just, I'm a very steward of the land and is there, is there actually documented?
Sure.
I think there'd be single farmers here, people that are concerned about soil health.
Yep.
This is so new, how do you find research on something that hasn't happened yet? Go ahead, Carol. Karen, right?
So my, I'm Karen. So my concerns are kind of across the board with all the twenty-three green energy plans. First off, when we're talking to banks, where are these banks? Who are these banks? You know, Mastercard, where's that bank? Who is that bank? These are pretty uneasy economic times and we don't know what's gonna happen in the next three months. We only know that we had an election. And I feel kind of, we're dinnypicks because you're right, this is brand new stuff. And I don't know where the contract signatures go for all this green energy stuff. And I don't know who they go to and who they're going to go to. All these salespeople here, most of them, maybe there's a couple older ones, but most of you guys are under forty years of age. We're all people who are seasoned here, who have been working for longer than you've been born, actually. And we don't have any desire to quit working. We'll probably die working, actually. And you guys are all gonna leave. You're not gonna be accessible. You're not gonna, we're not gonna have any local county contracts. We live in a world where you make a phone call and you end up talking to computers. And you might do that for an hour and a half before you get disgusted and don't do it anymore. But we live in a world of global, highly done mergers. And some of that's already been brought up, but a lot of these contracts that people have signed are three years long, which is the lifetime of all of us here. But the stuff that goes on this land might last ten years or less. And it's real costly to us, the taxpayers, because we've been here so long, to repair or maybe not repair at all. Maybe it's just gonna be a bunch of junk standing on our land. Meanwhile, very few people are gonna profit from this, very few. And the benefit might be even to you guys, a very short period of time, you people who are signing this up. There's just not any history to, to review and investigate. It's kind of being done at the expense of the rest of the county, maybe this whole state of Iowa, maybe, maybe the whole United States. We may be here to see and live the consequences of taking the best ag land in the whole world out of crop production and out of livestock production. You guys may or may not still be eating beef, but you may or may not be buying a dozen eggs. What do you think's causing all of that? And those who were and are and will be signing up for these contracts may not see the long-term financial gains that we think you're going to see. You're all signing your land away on a promise, on a promise. And all of us have seen a depression or been right on the heels of one. You guys are too young to know how this is gonna turn out. We're too old to know how this is gonna turn out. Thank you.
I like the way you ended that, Karen. She made some good points. Scott in the back.
This is the guy for Ted Renewables. Have you had to do any decommissionings? Is there any, can you guys reference anywhere where they've done one that was successful? Where it was done, the people were happy after a big storm, it got wiped out. Do any of you guys know any of this that Ted can tell us about? Or someone we can contact that, that they had a successful decommissioning of this, one of these projects?
I'll try to answer quickly. Chris Pecard with Stantech, been working with Ted for a couple of years now. I'm not aware of a project that has had to be decommissioned. At this point, everyone I've worked on is either in the development process or it's been constructed and now it's been operating and transferred to Alliance or Excel Energy. I'm based in Wisconsin, so they're basically, the utilities there are buying the projects there. So no, sorry, I haven't seen one come down yet because they're still operating assets. Because it's so new.
Yeah. The University of Iowa did a study on hail storms in the United States. Were you aware that Iowa is number one for hail storms and hail damage? So when you have a thousand acres of solar, we have to take into account that there's a strong possibility that before the panels lose their life or that they could be destroyed. So that's why a decommissioning or a, somebody that takes over every time these turn over because they seem to turn over quite frequently, you will be able to take care of that. Because it sounds like you guys set them up, somebody else applies to you and then we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Jim, you want my comment again?
Yeah, I've got a quick one. As, we were talking about tornadoes and derishes. I'm sure that engineering has been done on these for wind studies. Do you know, you know, approximately how many miles an hour wind gusts that will push in? I've never heard anybody bring it up.
I can tell, I mean, all, all the, sorry, I'm Gaultier Dubois. I work for Ted Renewables. All the trackers that these solar panels are installed on do go through very, very detailed wind tunnel testing. And for the most part, I can tell you that there are a lot of projects installed on the coast where there's hurricanes. Most of them, I believe, are rated for at least a hundred and twenty miles per hour winds. And then like, what's that?
Maybe we're a hundred and forty.
Yeah.
So, so that, that's, there's the structure itself is rated for that. And then the, the pile system itself, that holds everything in the ground, is also designed by licensed professional engineers. The, the level of wind that that's designed for is based on the ASE, American Society of Civil Engineers standard. I don't know the rating here. It could be more than a hundred and twenty miles per hour. I'm not totally sure. But that's typically for sustained wind as well. Then, so usually wind gusts is rated higher. But there's a lot, to answer the immediate question, yes, there is a lot of wind tunnel testing that goes into the design of the structure itself.
What was your name again?
Uh, Gaultier Dubois.
I can still that. G U A?
Uh, G E U.
G U?
T H I E R.
What was the last name? D U B O I S? Karen, you had another minute?
Yes, I get another minute. So back in twenty twenty, Janet just alluded to that. We had a hundred and forty-some mile an hour wind gusts for forty minutes.
Then the tower, then the tower blew down. There was cold thunder.
And four miles wide was that, was that worst part. And most of us did not know it was coming. We were living, trying to stay alive through it. And I agree with what Janet just said, a hundred and twenty mile an hour sustained wind is not even close. And I realize that some people in Trader and Blackbrook area have been blessed and haven't been blown away yet. But your time is coming because these storms are unpredictable, they're frequent and just wind just keep blowing. The sixty mile an hour wind is almost nothing anymore. But thank you.
Gaultier. Gaultier.
Gaultier.
Gaultier. So-
That, that was the hundred and forty sustained.
Was it? Okay, so-
Twenty minutes to thirty minutes, yes.
Forty minutes at my house.
So I don't have a direct-
Well, you don't live right here.
So I don't have an answer for that scenario. We can certainly look into it, but just gonna bring it back to the decommissioning plan. As, as the owner, whoever owns the plant, long-term is operating it, they are extremely incentivized to make sure it's running and producing electricity. That's how they get the money back, right, from spending hundreds of millions of dollars on these plants. So the first thing that would kick in is the insurance policy, which is, you know, not a cheap policy. And, and to the comment made earlier about hail, insurance premiums for solar plants have been going up, you know, dramatically in the last five years. There's been some, you know, hail events in Texas that have frankly disrupted the industry and made, you know, securing insurance more expensive. So the insurance policy would kick in. Where the decommissioning plan would come into play is typically, oftentimes, if the plant is not operating for a year, eighteen months, whatever you guys decide, that's where the bond come in. So if the owner operated the plant and their insurance policy isn't gonna kick in and that project is not operating for a length of time, you guys can call on that bond to then rip it out.
I have a question, twenty-six seconds left.
What did they do in Texas?
So my question has been for the last three years. Do you guys really, are you working for companies that wants the renewable energy, the green plant energy? Or are you working for a company that wants our land since these contracts are thirty-plus years long? That's what I want to really know. Thank you.
And I'll follow up with that. How much are you being subsidized by the federal government, which is our taxpayer money?
And will that subsidy continue with the, after the election?
Go ahead, you gotta answer for it.
Only if I'm allowed to respond.
Sure, go ahead.
So, so a couple of points. On the hail, because I just wanna address that very real good, there's a project in Texas. Their operators didn't, there's methods to stow it in a certain angle. Their operators didn't operate the plant wrong, right? They screwed up. Their insurance got called. All of us now have to pay more. The industry is paying more insurance money because of it and rightfully so. So the market responds, the market signals, and that hail event was a market signal. With subsidies, the, there is an investment tax credit. And so that is a tax incentive for solar energy. There's tax incentives for every form of energy production. Fossil fuel production tends to get their subsidy or tax incentive through a master partner limited ship. Master partner limited ship is a very, you know, structured financial vehicle that gives them a special tax breaks on production. So the question is, why do we subsidize energy? Because we believe in America, low-cost energy makes us more powerful and that we should use domestic energy sources and not import it from overseas. And so there are tax structures for domestic energy production, for solar, for wind, for not so, probably not so much for coal anymore. Though there may be for natural gas, for oil, for ethanol, ethanol. So there's tax structures in place to incentivize domestic production of energy of all types. And I believe that's the right thing to do. Now, solar industry, we get a thirty percent investment tax credit. That tax credit, though, is only predicated on making an investment into infrastructure and planting equipment. So it's a one-time tax credit. That is, you get for investing in infrastructure and building that infrastructure. So you just get it one time. It may go away. The market will adjust. The industry is not predicated on this tax credit. The industry is really predicated on abundant sunshine. And, you know, this is, the solar panel was developed in America. It's American technology. We've been building solar plants for over twenty years. There's some, the reason why there's not examples of decommissioning is because there's plants that are operating for ten, twenty years and they haven't got to the end of their life yet. And so I think that's a good example. And, you know, if the tax credit goes away, maybe a few less will we get built, but maybe not. The cost to manufacture a solar panel is very low because of the innovations in American engineering and manufacturing. So that's really what's driving it and the need, the fact that we're building more industry in America, building more manufacturing and manufacturing. If we don't want to build stuff in China, which I don't wanna do, let's build it here. But guess what? You need electricity to power the plants. So-
Here, come in.
Yep.
We don't wanna build it in China, right?
Well, probably with my-
Or Japan or anybody else.
Well, we wanna have-
You said we don't wanna import our energy from somebody else. We don't have to, right?
So-
No, that kinda what you alluded to. We wanna produce our own here in America.
As a veteran, I believe that we can develop our domestic energy infrastructure and taking advantage of the abundance of sunlight, if it's cost competitive in the open market, absolutely should. So-
Who owned your, who's your parent company when you go back to the basics? Who is your parent company? What country are they from?
Great. Well, so our parent company is owned by shareholders ultimately. It's, the parent company is headquartered out of Tokyo, but it's owned locally. Tokyo, Japan.
Japan.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that.
And Berkshire Hathaway is our largest shareholder. So our insurance plans are probably, so I've-
I'm not trying to pick on you. I thank you for being a veteran.
But, but, and I just apologize for bringing that up. I just am really passionate that, like, we should develop domestic sources.
Right.
So-
Thanks, Wade.
Give him a line.
Anybody, anybody else? Andrea?
We'll talk about wind and tornadoes and stuff like that. My question is, the people that are surrounding us, that are now participating. If, and we've went through this twice. And I went through three tornadoes, one was a kid. So I'm not sure if the bond will go off. So I'm not sure if the bond going off will be valid. But what bothers me is all that crap out there, that you gotta go out there and you know what it's like. So what, what happens if it crosses boundaries? Out of, you know, say it crosses the road, say it crosses somebody's boundary, does any of this?
That's something we need to address in this, in, in our, in our ordinance, I think we need to require that the, they have insurance that, you know, covers.
Covers the neighbors.
Right, storm damage.
Because I know as it sits in Iowa right now, Iowa law is if you close into your field too bad, you take care of this. So we need to figure out how you are going to take care of surrounding people because, I mean, that, there are plenty. And I've been listening very closely, but I haven't heard how that can pay back. So, I mean, that's, that's a major concern, too. And the other thing that started thinking is, it was natural. So say there's five million in there, and you get lucky and you find somebody that only costs three million to take care of all this, where's the rest of it?
Goes back to the, to the decommissioning?
Yes.
A certainty bond?
Yeah, whatever is, whatever is used to do the decommissioning is used, and then the rest is left in the bond. Right, or, or if there's money in escrow, if it's done that way, then that money would go back to the solar company. So you use what's needed to be used, and then the rest is returned.
Okay, so now that bond's in the bank, it's saved for several years. And I think I caught in the other meeting that there's no taxing on energy companies, and then the farm tax goes away. Is there any way to, to getting credit back to the county from that line? I mean, I don't know, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to take.
And I'm still used to interrupting, my wife, can I interrupt you here? She made a good point because right on the north of it, north edge of Elbraon, a grain bin blew across the road into a neighbor's property. And it stayed there for probably a year or two. And it came out, came out, come to find out that it was the neighbor that had it blown on his property that had to take care of it, which is BS, but that's Iowa law. So it eventually hauled it back across the road and put it on the property of the original owner. And I don't know what they worked out, I mean, they're both people that try to get along and everything, but that's a good point.
Well, I mean, we, we just have a couple of problems that the neighbors have that didn't need to have, but good neighbors take care of each other.
Right.
Mine just blew from one side of the farm to the other.
I got to address part of what she said. Karen and I went in the assessor's office after one of the meetings, it'd been a month or two ago, and asked the assessors that. And they said, if you're a farmer and you own the land, and you're paying property taxes on the land, and they put in a solar panel field, the owner still pays the same land taxes.
Property taxes?
Because the land hasn't changed.
True.
But it's got solar panels on, and it's up to the, the owner of the field to pay the taxes on the industrial part of it. That's what they told us, right Karen?
Yeah, so the person who's getting money for the solar panels in the winter, but aren't getting, they don't pay anything extra. The landowner has to, in a rental situation.
They still have to pay their land taxes.
Are you considering taxation section part of the financial stability, or will that be covered in a different meeting?
Good question.
Because I have other comments on that, I just didn't think that was included.
Any, what, anything I've run across is once you put solar panels on it, you don't pay property tax anymore on the land.
Why ask the assessor's office?
Well, if you look, you go on, on the map, look down there at Lewis County, Wapaloa, none of those farms pay any tax. Zero. Right up to the year, they, they put the solar panels on, they pay tax, the solar panels went off, and then it's zero, 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 zero property taxes on that farm.
So everybody else's taxes go up, then they compensate for that.
Right, but it's, it's because there's not a tax on energy.
So how's, how do we make it up?
You can go up there and look at Blackhawk County, and they put solar panels out there on, on the, up there by the airport, and there's tax, 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 zero, zero, zero. You know, if you look at the assessors.
So what would you guys do to make that up?
So. Hi everyone, I'm Justin Willis, we're Ted Renewables, and I just want to clarify that point before we get back to decommissioning. And in the state of Iowa, there is a state law or statute, and it's called a replacement tax. And the replacement tax defines the way in which solar energy production is taxed. And the way that it's taxed is as a fraction of cents of the kilowatt hour production. So the way that it works is that that money is taxed, or sorry, that project is taxed under that regime, and then the money is distributed to all the Tampa, regular Tampa County taxing districts under the replacement tax. So if you want to know more about that, you should look up the replacement tax for the state of Iowa.
What was your name, sir?
Justin Willis.
So you're saying the farmer doesn't have to pay the property tax, but the, the company, Ted Renewables, would pay the property tax?
It isn't a property tax anymore, it's a tax on the energy they produce.
But it goes back to all of Tampa County's regular taxing.
But it did, it's the taxes on the energy, on the watts, the kilowatts it produces, it is not on property.
So if for some reason it gets damaged and it's not producing anything, the farmer's still not paying for it, and the energy's still not paying for it? So the county's still not getting any taxes at all, is there any?
Not if, not if they're not producing energy. They only get, they only get revenue when it's producing energy.
So if something got damaged, there's no incentive for the farmer to clean that up then, because he's not getting charged the property taxes on good act length?
Then it did not produce energy for a year, whatever you all choose to write into your decommissioning plan. Then it would be time to call on that bond and act it out that way.
So then that needs to make sure that gets worded into decommission, that makes sense.
But it's in your best interest to fix it so that you are producing electricity, so you, you get money, and then the taxes will come back to us.
So I'm sure that whoever has a project you or whoever we sold to, they're going to be watching it pretty closely. Because they don't, they're not going to sit there and watch something not producing.
I got a question, Justin. That fraction of a percentage of tax, how much is it, do you know?
So for our project, which is a 190 megawatt project that we're proposing here, it's about $200,000 a year for Tampa County.
How does that figure out? That's the tax you'd be paying?
That is the tax that we would be paying to the Tampa County regular taxing district. So Tampa County, North Tampa County School District.
Township.
The township.
Any school district within the county, right? 200,000? If you're at 190 megawatts, megawatt, right?
Is that if the sun shines every day?
That's if it's producing that much, right?
That's, that's based on the modeling that's been done for the product. And you don't have the business, we're making a investment, and we expect a certain amount of return, and that's not wishful thinking. That would be what you're actually expecting to be able to produce facility of 190 megawatts.
And how many acres would you, did you estimate, use that on that model to spread that out over?
I believe that the project right now is estimated to be 910 acres.
Yep, and we can think of the way to most effectively share it with you all, but the, the delta between the current property tax that those, 900 whatever acres are paying versus what the project will be paying most of operating. The delta is, you know, pretty big, it's not like two or three times, it's way bigger than that.
That's an annual, is that what you're saying, Justin?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm just doing it in my head, 200,000 divided by 1,000 acres is $200 an acre, just, just a very simple way of looking at that. That's if it's, right? No, that's not.
200,000 divided by 1,000, 2,000 per acre?
No, I don't think so. Three zeros at the end of 200 is three zeros.
Teach second grade.
200, right? 200 an acre?
Two zeros is all we do.
Approximately.
Approximately, I think we're focusing.
I know, we're getting off.
Well, we're focusing on Ted Renewables, and this is not for Ted Renewables, this is for all future projects coming. You know, and if we just focus on one project, we're going to miss, we're going to miss the boat, because we're going to, we're designing it for one, and we got to, we got to go for all future projects.
I've related to all projects. When we talk about the decommissioning, it sounds like there have not been any big projects that have completed their lifespan yet to be decommissioned. And yet we heard that in 40 years, when it's decommissioned, the prairie is going to make the soil even better. How can you say that if we don't have any studies of 40 years of solar projects?
Yeah, we can argue this all night, or we have to.
We better, we better wrap up our public comments of the board to get to work on the plan. I appreciate your comment, I appreciate all your comments, and I thank you all for coming. Heather, you got something to say?
I do, if you got time for me.
That's the first I've seen of you, you're hiding behind somebody.
I'm going back, I'm just listening, so, you know, it's fun to be able to listen, everybody.
All right, I'm Heather Knibble, I am a newly elected Tampa County Supervisor. Well, okay. Want me to stand? I'm going to talk to these guys. All right, so I'm going to be starting as supervisor in January, so nice to meet you guys. Thank you guys for the work, I know it takes a lot of time, you know, through ordinances, so I appreciate you guys doing that. A lot of things, there's things that have already been mentioned that I already had written down. So the bond upfront, that's a great idea. I know Ben mentioned the third party to determine it, you don't want the developer to be the one to pick the amount, you want to use a third party, so I like that idea. The accounting for inflation, I hadn't thought about the three to five years, it's probably not a bad idea, because who knows? I mean, in five years, it could go up a lot, it could go up a little, so that's not a bad idea. My question, I guess, to the attorney, Mike, was it? So like, can you do interest on that bond that the county could then draw back on? Like, can that bond money, does it just sit there, or can it go into something? And then the county could use that, that bond money or that interest, like, from the bond? If it's millions of dollars, is that something that could happen?
Yeah, it's a good question, so. I think part of the challenge is we're thinking of a bond, like, they're, you know, taking the money and putting it into a bank account.
Right.
The bond is basically a promise from a massive bank or insurance company.
Got it, so it's not action?
Set aside some of its funds for that.
Okay.
So the bank or insurance company, they're, they're the ones that get the interest on the bond.
So that would go to the insurance companies and the bank, not to the county, correct?
Correct, because the county's not holding the money.
Right.
You know, if we put 5 million in an account.
Okay. Okay, nope, thank you. I just wanted to learn if there was some extra money that the county or whoever could, could gain off of that, so. I agree with, you know, the hail, the tornadoes, you know, weather patterns come, technology changes. I mean, if technology changes, maybe solar's a little different than wind, but, you know, there's risk of as the years go on, maybe solar ends up not being used anymore. Full removal, so I'm sure there's some different lines and things underneath. It'd be good to put in the decommissioning to full remove everything, and remove it from the county, just completely, you know, let's get it out of here. Like you said, there's blades in there, you don't want solar panels lined up sitting around, so ways, no matter if they're damaged or decommissioned, to just completely remove them out. I like the point of the transferable, I mean, I, I think it's always good, too, to make sure the decommissioning, it is transferable, make sure that the current supervisors have an opportunity to know it's going to be transferred, to make sure the ordinances are going to be met by this new company. So with no history of decommissioning, so we know Texas had, like you mentioned, the big hail, maybe call down there, maybe you could find someone, or Ted could do that for you. It may be nice to get some real results of what happened, you know, like, what, what did they do? Did they clean them all up and just remove them? Did they put them back in? Like, did it hurt the ground if, you know, it broke this, whatever the material is all over into the ground? What happened, you know, or maybe some kind of study will come out from that. One thing, we were talking about subsidies, that tax incentive, that 30% credit, is that as soon as you start construction? Or is that after it's built? Or when would you get that 30% tax credit, I don't know, as you've been or who mentioned it?
It's once the project is placed in service.
So it has to actually start generating energy to get that tax credit?
Correct.
Okay, okay, nope, I think, yeah, I like the, the higher amounts, the 130 plus, I mean, I think do your research, I don't know either what that value is, but it's definitely learning when it's not something that a lot of counties have done. I mean, you definitely don't want to be first typically, because you don't want to be the one that, you know, doesn't put enough out there. Like you said, if a mouse can get in a little hole, and you do something wrong, and, or if the subsidies change with, you know, a new president, you just, you got to be careful, so appreciate what you guys are doing. I know when the wind topic, we, we have no bond until 15 years. I mean, that's, that puts this county at a huge risk, so I think we have to do a good job. And Ted, appreciate you interacting and, and being a, good to, good to at least share your opinions and be around, so. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Heather. I think we better move along.
Did you want to, you, Al, Al wasn't here, he was later?
Oh, yes, thank you. Thanks for reminding me of that.
Yes, no problem, I just forgot myself, I stuck it out here, so.
So Al Shafbaugh's been in a lot of our meetings.
Hey, this is what I want, I don't want any damn bond.
He had some comments.
Yeah, break it up.
For our Tampa County zoning meeting. On commercial solar, the first thing to consider is to make sure that Tampa County has no liability of any project planned, under construction, in use, or during decommissioning. This will be difficult to do as we are dealing with limited liability corporations, LLCs, as they have very little assets. The only party that could be held liable is the landowner that leases the land of solar LLC for a profit. This must be very clear in the new regulation that the landowner, not Tampa County, is liable. Next, we need to make sure that Tampa County will receive revenue from the project. Due to a poorly constructed state law, that ends property tax on commercial solar. The only revenue is from a formula using the amount of energy produced. Due to weather conditions, age, making solar less efficient, and new technology, the revenue to Tampa County will go down to zero. Can Tampa County have in the solar ordinance that if the solar energy production is low, or no energy is produced, the solar goes back on property tax? Al Shafbaugh. Well, you've given us a lot to think about tonight, and I think we need to move on, as Wade is reminding me. Five board members here. What are some of the, I probably ought to direct this to you, Wade, you've done the most research, but I want to include everybody. What are some of the more favorable county decommissioning plans you've looked at, and as far as modeling after any of them?
Here's a couple of, this, this is a Tampa County one, I put, I put a couple edits in on a couple of points that I.
We can all get one, right?
Yeah, that I thought were kind of important.
This is an edited Tampa County.
Yeah, well, I just, it was Tampa County, and then I just put in the red, some red stuff there.
I'm running out of, I missed one. Oh, I got it.
It, it, it comes down to just, the script for the plan, removal of all stuff, provision for removing all structures associated equipment, so forth. And one of the things I saw in two different ordinances, and it was exactly word for word, this, what's in the red, for any part of the energy project unleashed, property that a plan may incorporate agreements with the landowner regarding leaving access roads, fences, gates, repurposed buildings in place regarding restoration of agriculture crops or forest resource land. Any remaining structures must be in conformance with regulations at the time. And I saw that in two different ordinances, that a lot, that there were a lot, the ordinances were different. I mean, a lot of the wording was different, but that paragraph was identical in both of them. And that's one thing that I think we want to include in ours. And, and another thing that I think, I, I'm one, I'm, I'm not in favor of a bond. I'm, if, if you look, like, in the Tampa County, down here on number seven, a bond, escrow, or other acceptable form of funding. And in all of them, they say a bond, escrow, or, and for me, I want that money in an escrow account. Not, not, not a bond that has to be, you're, you're depending on somebody to keep paying the, updating that bond and paying that bond. And, and you get into a mess like this, these blades, where they're going after them to try to get them to fund this bond, and they, they're just chasing them all over, and it's not happening. And if the money is in escrow, it's there. So for me, having the money in escrow and not as a bond is, is really important. And I'm not talking about Ted, we don't know who's coming down the road, down in the future. And then the other thing is to keep the county protected. Who's making money on this? The, the, the solar company and the landowner. Landowner, you have 1,000 acres in this, you're going to, you're going to be making a million or $2 million a year. You can have some skin in the game. You're making millions in, you know, 40, 30-year project, you're making 30, 50 million dollars. You can have some skin in the game, so I, if you go. You can have some skin in the game. So I, if you go to number five, a written financial plan, this is what's in Tama County that I edited a little, in the, in the red. Approved prior to the order granting an easement shall ensure that the funds will be available for decommissioning and land restoration, and a provision acknowledged by the dominant easement owner that all the terms of the plan shall be binding on the applicant as dominant owner, and I put in "and" landowner, and any of the future successors, assignees, and heirs. And then this, number six, I just wrote this, and I'm not legal, so that, that, like, this gets the idea across. The landowner shall review the financial security provided by the developer and sign an agreement to be responsible for any expenses which the financial security fails to cover. Agreement, agreement shall be secured by the land on which the SEFS resides. The agreement shall be recorded in effect until decommissioning is complete. If the land is transferred, this responsibility shall be incumbent on the new owners. That, that the landowner, I mean, he's not going on, he, he looks at the money that's in escrow, and he says, yeah, that's good enough. But if something unforeseen happens, or, you know, something, and if, if he, if it's a hundred and ten percent, and he says, no, that's not good enough, and he doesn't sign off on it, and then it's up to the, the developers, maybe they have to go to a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty. And they're, they're, he's not gonna say, okay, you gotta do a hundred percent, 'cause they say, well, we're not gonna put it on your land, and he's not gonna be making that fifty million dollars. So, you know, they, they'll only have to work that out, what it is, but I, I think we'll want a minimum, and I would put a, a minimum here, was it, I got a one of these earlier notes that we got from, hi, my name is Heather Cunniball, I live in Tama County, these letters we get. And in this one, she had written for decommissioning costs of real security, cash deposit, and an escrow account at a hundred and fifty percent of the estimated decommissioning cost needs to be done before approval of the project. So the, the author of this thought a hundred and fifty back at that time. I, I, it looks, and when I look at ones, if you look at Des Moines, they're three hundred percent. You know, they'll go from anywhere from a hundred and ten to three hundred percent. I think a hundred and fifty is probably on the upper end, but I wouldn't wanna be below that, I think when our, in our ordinance, we have a minimum, like, a hundred and twenty or a hundred and thirty in escrow, and then the, the landowner has to sign off on it. If he doesn't, then they'll have, then they would have to raise, whatever, whatever it comes to, the landowner, it has to be that, that, you know, it's agreeable to Tama County and to the landowner.
What does anybody else think from the board as far as the percentage?
I think that a hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty percent would be where it should be.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I was thinking a hundred point five first.
There are, a lot, if you look together, there's a lot of them at a hundred and twenty five.
You're saying the landowner is responsible, then anything that.
Any shortfalls.
And it shouldn't. Falls from ten renewables goes to the landowner.
Well, if something happened, unforeseen happened, you go at the hundred and twenty, and then we review it every five years. Every five years, they do another study. And one of the, one of these ones that have passed out, that instead of doing one engineering study, they do two engineering studies, and they, they put them together, and that would be a little more reliable, I think, if you had two engineering studies every five years. And if you have this money in an escrow account, then, and it could, it should be accumulating interest, and that interest stays with it for those five years, 'cause that should account for the inflation, until the new one, new plans are developed, and the cost, the costs from new ones are done. And when that, when that happens, if there's extra money in there, that can go back to the developer. But keep enough in there, and then let it accumulate interest, and that interest should keep with the inflation, and then if it gets extra money at the end of that, when the, when the new, you know, the engineers do the new study, then that, that extra money would go back to the developers again. But we would keep enough money in escrow. And then, as, if this thing changes hands, we still got, the money is there.
Yeah.
And this, there's, there's two things in these. This, this is Des Moines, and, and this is an edited Des Moines one. I put in red there, I put the the, the financial security in there, and it, in Des Moines, the structures, if you look down on number four there. I thought that was kind of. Kind of interesting.
They're protecting themselves a little bit, aren't they? Yeah.
Yeah. As I, when I look through these, uh, uh, Des Moines, you know, if we picked the best of a lot of them, I, I think the Des Moines one really had a lot, but I, I did like, in some of the other ones, they were a little bit more specific about removing this and removing that, and returning, you know, removing all the gravel and removing, you know, a little more definite on, on the detail, on the minimum that they would have to remove, and then then, then Des Moines did, but then a lot of them.
You had edited on number four, then you also had a number on the next page, right? Under financial security.
Yeah, that, well, that, and that's a repeat, that's the same thing. I copied on the other one.
Alright, alright.
And on, on this one, I did not put the thing in about, I thi, I think, I really liked the thing about, if the landowner wants to keep the fences, and if I had a, a nice, nice.
Driveway, or?
No, a nice driveway and a, and a nice big fence around my field to keep the deer out, that would be alright. But some of those things, like, maybe they, they place a building there that, that works in there, and it isn't, you know, but there's a but, but the thing is, and it, I like, the way it was worded, any remaining structures must be in conformance with regulations in effect at the time, so you, you couldn't have a commercial big transformer out there or something like that. It would be the things like, like maybe the fences and, and some drive, some driveways, you know, you seem like you never have too many driveways in the field. So I, those are a few things, but I, I think Des Moines is, is a, is a pretty good one to start with. There's some of them, yeah, the decommissioning abandonment. If it hasn't been in operation for three hundred sixty-five days, and there's you let them very, address very well, that if it's, if, if it's something like a windstorm or something like that, and it's out of commission for a while, that, you know, they, they come back with a plan for rebuilding and so on, that it, it isn't just because it's dumb, or a hundred and eighty, or, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days or something, that it isn't. We don't, we don't pull it out from, pull the rug, rug out from under their feet, you know, they.
Can I interrupt you a second?
Pardon?
Can I interrupt you a second? If you got, if you look on this handout, or did you, maybe you don't have it, one oh five.
We do, we do.
In Loisa County. Read through that, that's kinda what Wade is talking about now. Any SGEs or SFPs provided for this, in this ordinance has not been, has not been in operation for producing electricity for at least a hundred and eighty consecutive days, excluding natural catastrophe event, shall be removed. So if it's not, if they're not using it for six months, then it's time to remove it, is what that's saying, right? The Loisa County, or this, it's, this says, Tama County zoning administrator should notify the owner to remove the system. Within ninety days, the owner shall either submit evidence showing the system has been operating and producing electricity or remove it. If the owner fails to refuse, fails to or refuses to remove the solar energy system, the violation shall refer to the Tama County attorney, Loisa County attorney. In the case of a natural catastrophe event, a detailed restoration plan to return to operational status must be provided to the zoning administrator. Do we have anything like that in our Tama County? I don't believe so.
This, yeah, the, the Tama County one, that's, that's, I got that edited in there, but otherwise, this is, in the Tama County, we don't, yeah, have the what they have is, the, the number one, remove all sundry stores by order entered by the Solar Access Regulatory Board for reasons stated in Iowa Code five sixty-four point, five sixty-four eight point six arising under this ordinance. This, this is something that five sixty-four A, I don't know how much time you guys have spent on that, but I get a headache and have to take, except on every time I go through it. I mean, it, it.
That's what's in our Tama County board draft, right?
Five sixty-four A is, I've counted thirty-two times it's referenced in the Tama County zoning ordinance. And in all the other ordinances I've got here, I've got like twenty of them, full ordinances from other counties. And I saw in one other county, they referenced it one time, and I think it was five sixty-four eight point seven, and it had to do with, what was it? I can't remember now, but it, it was one, one small detail, and it would, which we had, and Des Moines addresses anyway, so to me, the way Tama County keeps going back and referencing is that five sixty-four A, and there's some of the things in there, like on five sixty-four A, to, you can get an easement across a non-participating landowner. And, and in, in the Tama County ordinance, we, we say, okay, but you can't do that. We, we forbid you from using five sixty-four A for subservient easement. But we got so much language in our ordinance, about five sixty, referencing that, and then with the other ordinances that you have that we read, it's just easy to read down through the ordinance, and everything is explained right there. And I think it's important that we keep ours so it's straightforward. When you read it, you know what you're reading, and, and not sending size sixty-four A, and then you go pull that open and, and try to reference that, and the language in that isn't always, you gotta read it, I gotta read it every time. To, to, to really dig it all out, so.
Would you recognize it for just a second, 'cause I'm gonna answer that.
Alright.
That's my area of expertise, is writing regulations. That kinda stuff's gonna go away. Write it, write it like you said. Make it nice and clean, clear and plain as to what we wanna do. When you start referencing a lot of stuff, that's gonna go away.
Well, then, to, to me, I, I think a good starting point is, is Des Moines. There, there were some, Des Moines has some holes in it. The whole county one, but to me, you know, to take, as it was, as he's, one of the speakers said, take the best out of the different counties and move them in there. I think Des Moines is, would be the background that we wanna start with. And like I said, there are absolutely some holes in there. And some of the holes in Des Moines, we have covered in ours. I mean, some of the things we have covered in ours are really pretty good, and explained well, and I like them, but if, if we want one that, that's pretty straightforward to go with, I think that would be the easiest one to start with. And, and going through the different ordinances, a lot of them have, there's, some of the things are in different order, you know, and that makes it a little more difficult to cut and paste, but I think that we, we could do that. So if, if we wanted, and we're starting with the decommissioning, and if we can get that to, to, we, we start with the Des Moines plan, and then, and then includes these other things that, like, we had a Loisa there, and some of the other ones, put them in there, and then get the wording and this, this stuff correct. I think that, that's.
Can I put you on the spot, Wade? Just a question. The Tama County, that's where you put in the two A, you edited about keeping the fences and that, is that addressed in Des Moines, or is that something we need to put in?
No, that's not in, I, I put it in, in that copy that, that I made in Des Moines. I put it in there, but it, or maybe I didn't put it in there. I just put it in the.
Tama one. So that's something we probably won't add to.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely think we wanna do that.
So where do we put it? That's my question.
I don't know where to go.
I'm gonna fit the best you got, you folks. Sorry, Carol, I almost said you guys.
It's okay. I won't take advantage.
Any part that I predicted, I'll use probably the plan. Leaving those roads and fences there.
Probably under C on the decommissioning plan. And you have one on, we're on the Des Moines plan.
Yep.
Under.
After seven?
No, it's on the front page. I'm on the right one.
But I mean, it goes one through, uh.
Oh, yeah, look under seven.
C, under C.
C, one, where the hell, one, right here, right there. All captured in the plan to remove all structures.
Very good.
And that was the but.
Add that in there.
Yes, like one A.
Yes, let's do that. If everybody's agreeable to that.
Yep.
So what are we doing?
So on the Des Moines County plan.
So here one A.
Put a one A in there, and it would be this two A off of the Tama County draft that Wade edited.
And then when, when we actually make our plan, that said it'll be a one A, that is kinda where I was doing stuff there, too, but we'll, we'll make a one, two, and three, and four, and five, and another number right.
Wade, may I ask a quick question? Um, you keep saying Des Moines, is it Des Moines County, or like, county for Des Moines?
Des Moines County.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Some of them have a lot.
Okay, we gotta, we gotta somewhere put in that hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty percent, whatever we decide on, estimate of decommissioning as a what do we call it? Escrow? Wade, is that the right terminology?
Right.
So where will that fit in that? Financial security.
Number, financial security in number one. Priority, the deals you provide to board, supervisors.
Leave out certi-bond?
Yeah, with escrow account.
Delete the, with a certi-bond, probably, right?
Right. And but then.
This is where we're gonna need an attorney to.
And then the finance, and then number two, the financial, or Donna, where it's two, she'll cover no less than, whatever, a hundred and.
Fifty, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and fifty, which we gotta decide on.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty. Well, we, we could, yeah, we could go a hundred, a hundred and twenty, well, the landowner is gonna be, have to agree.
Responsible anyway, yeah.
Right.
So a hundred and thirty should be enough.
Yeah, a hundred and thirty, and if, if he requires it be pushed up to a hundred and forty, then that's between him and.
Yeah. So under, number two, under E, right? Under financial security, that's what we're talking, Carol?
Yeah.
Make it a hundred and thirty percent, so that no less than three times the total cost.
So she'll cover, okay, so we're gonna take this out. So she'll cover a hundred and thirty percent of the total cost, is that what you just said?
Is that what we're, we're into, everybody?
Yes.
And the, the cost estimate is prepared by, and this, this is a, an engineer, and like, like I said, I, I liked the, there was one county that, that had like, two, in, two, two studies in an average of the two.
That would be under D one.
Right.
At the developer, we better finish this one. We're gonna change three times the total cost estimate to a hundred and thirty percent of the total cost.
Okay, so this would be, if I just, the financial security, she'll cover a hundred and thirty percent of the total cost estimate outlined in section D and D seven. That's, that's what you're doing?
Right, yes.
Okay, okay.
Got it?
Yep.
I don't remember which county that was that had.
More than one.
Two.
Should we look through that quick and see if we can find, if it'll go under D one, won't it?
Oh, yeah, you said you had some two, I didn't have one.
It was, that was Loisa.
That was Loisa.
And we covered that, yeah, and then with Des Moines. I'm looking for that, or if we ask for more than one engineer to come up with the plan.
Not yet. Not yet. No, I can't find it.
I'm looking through them.
Which one it was, I've been to.
Everything else, the only else is one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't necessarily think we need to.
Maybe.
I mean, if they're a licensed state engineer, I.
Okay.
Personally, I would think one would be a.
Alright.
Would be a.
What's everybody else think?
I think as long as you've got the landowner, the landlords coming in second anyway. He'll be backing up the kind of.
And then most all counties, yeah, almost every county, when preparing the cost estimate, salvage values aren't.
Aren't included, right? Or not included. Is that in here under Des Moines?
When preparing the cost estimate, under no circumstances will the salvage value of the equipment be deducted from the total cost of decommissioning.
Yep.
D five.
D five.
Found it, okay, thank you.
One, one question I have is, doing, doing all the enforcing on this, like we have a security bond, we have all this stuff. Who's managing that in the county? And that, there's expense to overseeing all this. And, and to get the engineering, you know, it says that, that the solar company will pay for the engineering.
Call.
Study and all that. But who's, who's in charge of saying, okay, it's time for this and to get this study done and?
The administrative costs.
Right. I think there should be, and, and some of these, I've seen in, in different ones, different places, not necessarily in decommissioning, where there are fees that are assessed for, like going through the, the plans and things like that.
Five A, Wade read that, under five A, does that answer the question or not? Alright, five, just five and then five A. Is that, would that be covering that? Five A where? Under Des Moines, second.
Oh, second page.
Yes. Does that cover it, Steve? The financial plan just states that all costs associated with the decommission of the S F P S shall be borne entirely by the owner or operator without any assistance from the county. So that would include those costs, or none or not?
No, not specific.
Not?
Not specific, you'd almost have to make, you'd have to have another line item.
How do we word it?
I bet. Or, or.
I'm not a lawyer.
Or, or what?
What you were just talking about, those extra costs.
Well, that might not be under the decommissioning, that's more under the administrative.
Overall administration.
That might fall into the solar regulatory board or whatever.
Well, further up, further up, this is, this is just the decommissioning.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you.
And I think.
Part of the licensing of the.
Yeah, if we get back.
That's when you collect the.
I'll, uh.
So wouldn't it be part of this decommissioning?
I think I emailed you like a bunch of, whole bunch of them. And Des Moines should be in there, but I can email everybody that, a copy of the Des Moines one, the full Des Moines one again.
Yeah.
And we can, we can see if that's in there, but I.
I think you did email the full Des Moines one, did you, yes. Yeah, not just the decommissioning section of it, if I'm correct.
But this is what I'm, I'm.
Yeah, no, you're right.
I guess I made pages stucked it.
Are there any other edits we wanna make to, to Des Moines County?
I think there, as soon as I go home, I'll send them on.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
What I'm wondering is if we shouldn't, you've been keeping track of this on your computer, right?
I'm, I'm waiting.
Trying.
I'm trying.
I, I, I've got these where I can cut and paste them at home, too.
Yeah, so, but what, what I need to know, when we're talking about cutting and pasting, so are you talking about like, whatever's in here now is gone?
Yeah, that's the, that's the.
Right, this is Tama County.
Tama, right.
Yeah, I've got, I've got Des Moines County up too, but so what I, I can do that. Um, so you just want me to take out this whole section, and then we'll just move the other one in?
Right, so just, that part, decommissioning on Tama County just.
What I was gonna say before you do that, do we wanna adjourn the meeting and go home and think about this? And at our next meeting, approve the changes we've decided on tonight?
Yeah, I, could we, we could, we'd like email it, and then if somebody has something else.
Yes.
Send it to everybody.
Right.
And then, so we're, we're kind of up to speed, and then we have one that we can bring to the next meeting and.
We can have some nice meetings.
If we do some back and forth online.
So we can have this cut and pasted for that.
Right, and I, I've got this already online at, at home, in a word format, so I think I could do that. But I, let's not go too far, I, I got so damn much stuff going on, and if we want to meet for a while, I think we need to get moving on it. Could we get one in this, early December? Well, we gotta run up to Mayo Clinic, and I got my, some damn much.
My opinion, this is just my opinion, board, is leave December alone, because you got the national holiday of hunting deer the first week or two. There you go. Or a state holiday. We're gonna have Christmas programs coming up, and everybody's got anything they belong to, they're having a Christmas party. And we all get stressed at Christmas, I don't think we need any more stress. Can we, could we meet twice in January? Is that agreeable to the board?
Yeah.
I care what we do, I'm fine.
And we can work at least another thing on us, yeah.
Let's try to get, let's, let's go back and forth and get one written up then, that we could bring to the meeting and.
Be ready for it, be ready to sign off on it, so.
Right, and I think we could bring it to the meeting, split copies out there and, and take, take any, you know.
Cause I looked on the.
Any comments again, and then, and, uh, move on that one and, and get on to the next.
Subject.
Yeah.
And I looked on the calendar, if I'm not mistaken, it's New Year's Day, January first, Wednesday, I believe. Anybody got a calendar they wanna look together on?
Yes.
So we've got eighth, eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second, twenty-ninth, we've got four dates to choose from in January, if you wanna meet on two of them. If the board is.
We gotta.
Majority of the board's agreeable with that.
Calendar.
We're talking Wednesdays, so.
Wednesday, yeah, let's stick with Wednesday.
Eight fifteen, forty-two, forty-nine.
There's, I'll have to look, we gotta run up to Mayo Clinic. Some repairs done, but.
Eighth is out for me. Alright, so we're looking at the fifteenth.
Or you can do the Tuesday, you wanna do a Tuesday or Thursday?
Uh, then you run into ball, kids events, grand, grandchildren and children's.
My ball games are all on weekends, so.
Alright.
Yep.
Ours are during the week. Tuesdays and, what are they, Tuesdays and Thursdays, wrestling meets, or basketball, or sometimes Fridays?
Yeah, Friday basketball, yeah.
So eighth is out for you.
Yeah, I got another meeting that night.
So we got fifteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-ninth we can work on. Do all three. Well, we gotta decide what we're gonna talk about first. What are we gonna tackle next? After decommissioning and financial security, we've kinda gone through that tonight. Some of the other.
What are some other hotspots?
Hotspots or subjects are setbacks, heights, radio and frequency noise, interference. What else, CSR?
There are any FAA rules, planes.
That's getting out of our scope, I mean, we can't.
Well, there, there might be.
We're not gonna be trumping the FAA or anything out here.
Public complaint process. Public complaint process.
Or S B C or anything like that, you know, that's far out of this scope for this.
Um, weed controls was something you guys had mentioned before also.
Public complaint processes.
Des Moines.
Weed, weed control, weed control.
Lots, yeah. Well, there's road use mitigation damages. Uh, if you go, if we take Des Moines and go backwards, the next one would be road use. And then back to the next section is permitting and review process. But I, I think, I, we, everybody takes the Des Moines one, and we just.
Keep going backwards.
Yeah, work back.
Work backwards on the Des Moines one from where we're at now.
Yeah.
Sounds like a plan.
There's permitting and review procedure, and then. But then, look at the other counties, and like, this is a section, we're gonna walk in this path. So permitting and review, look at other counties permitting and review. And maybe I can kinda do the same thing, just take the copies of those, some of the better ones and.
Send them out to us?
Yeah, well, I could do that, I could send them out. So it's kinda like, it's, when you have the whole forty-page thing, it's a little harder to do if you got just that section.
Just that section.
And it, it's a little easier to look for two or three of them.
So you're thinking permitting and review and road use, and what else would we cover? Or is that enough?
I think that might be permitting, review, process, procedure, and then.
Do that on the fifteenth, and then the twenty-ninth, you wanna.
Shoot for another one, does that work for you, Steve?
Yeah, that works for me.
What is that you'd like to talk about then, on the fifteenth?
Permitting and. And, uh.
Road use.
Road use.
Road use, here. So go backwards on that.
So.
Yeah, that's, the Des Moines is nice, they got them in big.
Yeah, this is road use.
Road use agreements and permitting.
Road use, and then back to the next heading.
Permitting is here.
You'd be doing, you're doing two items at a time then.
We're gonna try to.
Permitting and.
Permitting and review procedures and road use.
Well, it shouldn't be hard, there's nothing that's, if there's nothing out of the ordinary, it's not, it's not gonna matter.
Right. Committing and review procedure and road use. Well, it's on the fifteenth.
Like I said, Des Moines, it seemed like one of the layer ones had a lot of stuff, but it does have holes in it. Like every one of them has something that somebody else did better.
Right.
So.
And if I, if I go back even before that, sorry Wade, it's minimum siding and design standard, so that can be.
I think that's a, that's a big one.
That's a big one, so that'll be probably January twenty, twenty-ninth would be.
Which will cover setbacks and.
Right, siding and, yep.
Yeah.
Siding and design standard is what it's called. Article three. We'll split that on the twenty-ninth. Geez, I don't wanna run out of things to do. Alright, anybody else have anything on the board that they wanna discuss?
No, but I did while you all were sitting there talking, I cut and pasted that.
Right.
I'm gonna put in, I'm gonna go through and put our notes in here, and then I'll just email that out to everybody.
Perfect.
So I wanna reiterate this, our next meeting is when then?
January fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Fifteenth?
Yes. Yes, fifteenth and the twenty-ninth.
And the twenty-ninth. Alright.
And I have one question while, seems we have two.
I, I, I might have a conflict, I don't.
Oh, with the, with one of the dates, or?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know, I, I got halfway down there and I said, do I have the calendar? I, I looked at it on the refrigerator on the way out, and then.
That's good enough for us. We can, we can make adjustments.
I'll, look when I get home, Bob.
Yeah, you can always make adjustments, just so I, you know, just so I.
Where, where am I, where am I?
We don't have to publicize anything for a while yet anymore.
Yeah.
But those are our rough dates.
Correct, yep, and then I'll double check. Uh, the question I have, so we have two incoming supervisors here. As you, as you draft these, and you have your draft the way you want them, uh, you'll be given these in January. Rather than waiting until the whole thing's done, would you like to give the board of supervisors drafts as they get them? And then that way, they're going through them, it's not all at once, they're, everybody's kinda going through it together. And then they can look at it and make changes they may want to do, and then.
That, that speed it up.
As you're going, it's all getting done, and then they'll have it done sooner.
If they're up, if they're up for it, then it'd speed it up.
Yeah, and that's something that they'd like to do.
So then could we just share this?
Get paid time.
Keep sharing this?
Yes.
I would just, I could just highlight the edits.
Yeah, tweak them the way they want them.
Yeah, instead of throwing it all at them at once, like, we're trying to do, let them work at it a piece at a time like we're doing.
Right, cause yeah, yeah, that, that's, cause that's easier for you guys, so I would think it'd be easier for them, that's up to them if they.
What do you think of that idea, Heather?
Yeah, I think we should, we should talk about it. Yeah, we still have time, but yeah. I see, I see good and bad with that, but.
Well, then, I mean, they, they can always give it to you, and you do whatever you want.
Yeah, if you, if you didn't react, act on it, that'd be fine, you'd keep getting the pieces.
Or might ask, have a, ask questions.
So we can just keep sharing this after every meeting, whether or not they do anything, it's.
Right, yeah, that way they got it, they're looking at it, it's not thrown at them all at once. They've got time to look at it and everything.
There's always the, the thing that we get all down in, and then there's something back here that we.
Oops.
Pretend to go back and make one.
So before our final draft is approved, we'll, we should have the right to go back and kinda absolutely make edits.
Oh yeah, you can build back.
They may have questions on it too.
This way they.
Right.
That's what, that's what'd be great to get their input.
Steve, this decommissioning plan, yeah, that was for everything, no, that's just decommissioning, I'm sorry.
That's just decommissioning, that's all we're supposed to.
Yes, yes, yes. Anything else, board?
Yes, sir.
So let me look at my agenda. I think all we gotta do is put promotion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Give it to Carol.
Give it to Craig, give it to Craig.
No, no, give it to Carol.
All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming.
Good job. I did, I cut and pasted.
Thank you guys again for your hard work.
Good job.
I know, I know, it's not pretty, you know, cause Des Moines County is.
Okay, I have my purse back there with the boys.
I assume the names are.
Thank you, thank you for serving.
That's okay.
I hope, well, PDF, I don't worry about that.
That's right.
That's okay, you're good. They're gonna have to.
Did you wish you had some of that? More than.
Wow, we just started last year, we're all around.
Jim.
And. Leaving it up to the scratcher. We have a thirty-one. You live.
We need to see if they don't, they don't make the case.
Oh, thank you for your question. I'm sorry if I got you. When I get finished with something. Once again, I just hope that I should hold them up. I don't, this is so much. Right there. Give it a minute. But I'll.
I'll give it one more chance, and then he, he'll. But it's fifteen, but then I make sure I.
That's a lot of.
No, 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 I used to call you, and I sent you an email on my place, happy days. Yeah. Yeah. I have like. Well, they never know. Just about, just here. Hi, I'm there, I'm over there.
Alright now. Yeah, if that.
Well.
Yeah. Well. We can make it back.
We're going back to looking for. We give it our best.
We can make it anyway.
I guess there was a question. I don't know. There's a, I don't know. I think it's. Joanna.
I get it, I get it.
You get it, don't you? I just get a.
My. I just.
Well, yeah. We started calling it. We're getting it.
We've been working on that.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Take a road.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I think, I think we're, we're asking.
Cut, cut over it. Put a little salary system on there.
From the way it got rid of it, I'm making it hurt.
You guys all got your.
The license in the back.
I'm concerned though.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. Back there, I think they have.
What were you gonna ask? What were you gonna ask about?
Oh, I just saw everybody have it.
Keep track of it.
Always available, too, some shots. I'm just gonna. So. So there's somebody crying down there, but here.
No, watch.
Oh, okay. You don't have to fix pants. What do you do? You gotta. He doesn't. I am, I am.
I like this. Todd, Chris. Yes.
I can tell, I can. If I thought, they would be. That's good, now, it's, it would be.
You know, look at that, I don't use like.
Any place, what if? That's right.